I don't need that.
Are you sure? Okay. Oh, I don't know, I'm already here.
Okay. You seem to be operating under the assumption right now that the conservancy can control what happens within the perimeter of the park. To my knowledge, there was nothing in the agreement that gave you the right to build the park that allows you to control the programming. Am I wrong in that? Can the FDR Conservancy control the programming and the uses of the park instead of RIAC?
Well, we're hoping always that it be extremely collaborative. If you remember, the RIAC didn't want to have any responsibility whatsoever, financial or otherwise, for the park. So we assumed that at the time. Programming should be wide open and public. We're not going to invent all the programming. We want to know what you guys would like to do there. We expect you to do things in the park. In terms of controlling it, we do have responsibility for the rules under New York State Parks. We're open to suggestions, comment, anything else.
Well, some of the complaints that I have received was that people are being prohibited from walking into the park with a beverage other than water. I've received other complaints from parents who have been told they've been scolded by your employees when their children were running around on the lawn. And just a general feeling that when they go into the park, that they are being told they can't do certain things. When you first got your approval from the RIAC board to build the park, some of the issues were can people go into the park and have a picnic? Can people go into the park and fly a kite or throw a ball around? And at that time, the response was, oh, yes, it's a park, you can do all of those things. Now we're finding out, once you've got it built, you're imposing all of these rules, which were not part of the original agreement with RIAC to give you the right to build the memorial. So I'm just wondering if you can comment upon that.
Well, there's no question that our appreciation for what it is we've built, you know, change and develop as we build it. It never was a ballpark and sandbox place. I mean, it's a very formal setting, and very precious materials are used there that are vulnerable. So we are allowed to make those rules for that site. I mean, it is a sacred place as a memorial, and South Point Park is right there. So we're hoping that the combination of these two spaces, the formal one and then the totally relaxed one, informal one, you know, will provide residents with all the experiences that they look for. And as John mentioned, we are working to try to find out how we can protect the granite from what would happen if red wine or coffee or sodas were spilled on it. But until we solve that, it's very vulnerable, and we would like to protect it.
Well, it just appears that what you've done is a bait and switch, that you've made certain promises in order to get approval for the park, and once you've gotten it built, you've changed the rules upon which the approval was initially based upon.
Well, bait and switch is a little harsh. You know, we were building it just the way Khan designed it. That's the only mandate we had. And I don't believe we ever, I don't believe the agreement really governed the kinds of things you're talking about now. I mean, we want it to be a destination that gives people great satisfaction and a beautiful experience. So we'll do our best to do that. At the same time, we need to protect it. And about the help, we work very hard with the staff to make sure that they are pleasant always, responsive always. I don't think anybody's ever said a child couldn't run on the lawn. What we have to keep telling them to do, telling the parents, is please don't let them run up the revetments, which everybody seems to want to do. It's very dangerous. We're responsible for the safety, we're liable for the safety of everybody that comes to the park. So our rangers are instructed to keep people all ages from climbing up those revetments, sliding down the banisters, climbing the trees, hanging out over the walls. I mean, this is just basic safety that we're trying to provide in this space.
Just one final. Do you believe that you have the ultimate veto over what particular use goes on at the park? And that if RIAC wants to do something, suppose a third party wants to have an amplified concert down at the park? Your rules currently say there's no amplified music. Do you have the ultimate veto authority and say that that can't happen?
I think, say perhaps, that we do have the right to set the policy. And as I said, there are about three different levels. There's programs that people might want to do there, that we'd love to have you do there. And, you know, I mean, it's collaboration, no question. The commercial aspects, we will control, because they really are a different kind of thing. I think it's a shared responsibility. Our mission's very straightforward. We need to protect the visitors, create a fabulous visitor experience for them, and protect the park. And everything that we've done has gone to try and meet those objectives.
Thank you.
All right, she's next.
The best thing about it is the promise given amongst a lot of people who aren't here tonight, I'm disappointed in the park. I'm disappointed in the experience because of all of the rules and the fact that we used to have this beautiful little space. But basically now what you can do is walk through there and ride. It's very, so first of all, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, if you are not, because as part of your experience, it goes, this island is full of children, it's full of dogs, it's, you know, it's full of people who are used to being in that space. And many of those people have been taken from us. And I don't think it's fair for you not to understand that. So I have two thoughts. I mean, I guess the one is a question of thought. My understanding, we need for it to be a memorial. But on the other hand, given the design, does the entire space need to be treated as a memorial? As there is a very easy demarcation between the tip and what could be a memorial space and the entrance to the tip where the grass is, where people could enjoy picnics, where people could fly kites, it seems so philosophical. I understand the need to work together, protect the granite, but hopefully, in this day and age, the technology somewhere somehow assists to protect the granite. And the park, it could become a park and memorial, because it's very clear at this point, that it's a memorial, along the lines of church. And it's very, very disappointing to many people now to enjoy that space. And now I don't feel like I can, because the only thing I have to do is just walk through the park. And in reality, this is my apartment building down in one day in the early winter, and there were geese off of the grass. Well, geese fly all over the island all the time. And the security guys are having to run, shoo away the geese. And I thought, oh, my gosh. It's a pretty funny sight, than any sort of park for the security people to be shooing away wild ones. And so I think, you know, I was basically, I was waiting for some sort of reasonable solution that could be partially a park and partially a memorial.
Other than that, I'd say this too, just to start with the geese, the reason to try to keep the geese off the park is so the visitors aren't running through what they leave behind. So we would rather that the geese didn't hang out in the park, for your sake, not for the staff's sake. But, you know, we have, of course, for the people disappointed, people who used to be able to do whatever they wanted to do there. I would just point out that there was a large part of the residents of Roosevelt Island who did not find that space accessible at all. You know, I know you know what a large percentage of the population here is, to say, they have wheelchairs and scooters, et cetera. And they basically couldn't use that space, because even though it had been sculpted in the early 90s by Gulliver Cuomo the First, to the rough dimensions of the Khan design, because it was supposed to be built in that decade also, the paths where, just where the paths are now, the pavements are now, it's totally rid, it was totally rid, it was just not accessible, either to strollers or to scooters. And that part of the island's population is thrilled, that they can now go from one end of the other to the other of that space freely. So to those for whom the use is now circumscribed, you know, we are very aware of it, and we are sympathetic to it. For specific things we might do, you know, if we solve the problem with the granite, I mean, your idea of making part of it a memorial and part of it a park, the granite is everywhere. The granite is at the front, it's in the middle, it's on the sides, it's on the tops of the park, it's everywhere. So, and it is a single unit. I mean, it is a piece of sculpture in the landscape, but that works. So I'm not sure that it will be able to solve all of its to your satisfaction.
Can I speak to the lawn issue still?
Please do. My background is actually, for 12 years, I was the Director of Visitor Services at Waverhill, which is a health and garden up in the Bronx. And I'm hopeful that we will be able to sort of find a happy medium, because what we did there and other gardens, is there are quite a few restrictions of the lawn. We were so restricted that you couldn't go on the lawn, some gardens were like that. But we did allow beverages, we did allow food, we had areas where you could do that, but certainly not in the garden itself. The flip side of that is that every summer, when we had our barefoot dancing series, where we had folks come, you could walk barefoot on the lawn, knowing that there wasn't a chance that there'd be shards of glass or bottle packs or anything, and you could really enjoy the lawn as a lawn experience. We also sometimes would open the lawn up for things that we didn't normally necessarily always allow. But, you know, once in a while, we could do it, so possibly we could do things like that. We're also very hopeful that in our programming, we'll be able to make use of the space, and I would think for children's programming, arts and crafts, there'd be a wonderful way to use a lawn that isn't sort of populated with picnic hurs and things like that. So with the heavy restrictions, I totally understand the feeling that it's nothing but restrictions, but you also hope that those restrictions open up the opportunity to offer other things, because you have this clean and pristine moment that you reuse for programming, the enjoyment of people with bare feet and things like that. So, and we'll be working with everyone, and, you know, finding out what age groups you want to be bringing to the park, and how best they're going to enjoy the park, without it turning into an amusement park. You know, it isn't a memorial park, but I think there's a way we can work with everyone, and everyone can enjoy the experience, maybe in a group way, that it's not a way to enjoy Central Park, or when you go to someplace with Ferris Bueller, something like that. But there's a way we can take advantage of the rules and restrictions to offer things that are special to this space.
It would seem like, given the fact that you cannot get away from the geese and the dogs and everything, that that has to be built into the pavements.
Absolutely. It definitely does, and that's going to be a big challenge for us, but definitely, and we want to do that, you know.
And I'm straightforward. I mean, I have a small seven-year-old dog that cannot be petted humanly. So I can't go.
Cannot be what?
Cannot be petted humanly.
Oh, meaning you can't live alone?
A small seven-year-old dog that cannot.
Yeah, so.
So I took her down in a bag.
And again, this is an issue, having been in public gardens and at the High Line, and it's always, and I'm a dog owner, and I totally understand the wish and the desire to bring the dog with you. But again, because we have these restrictions, hopefully, that allows other things to happen, and also just to be protective of the lawns, you know, the south is obviously with dogs, there's sort of, there's a reason not to have them brought onto the park.
We quite agree with that. You know, we kind of get along in life. We hire our dogs there, you know, and we pay the dog sitter, but I have to pay the dog sitter to be able to only just walk through the park and not leave the sitter's end of time.
But we would welcome to sit and spend time, maybe not necessarily to picnic, but I hope we're going to be offering you wonderful programs that are unique and, you know, have taken your input, what you're interested in, what areas of the park architecture, water builder classes, photography classes, bringing artists to the park, so.
That all sounds terrific, and so I guess I hope the granite issue gets solved, because none of that can happen without the, without the granite protection.
Well, we restrict things to the lawn, and I'm very careful. I think any of the things I just mentioned would happen.
If we restrict things to the lawn, it seems like that opens up a lot of...
Right.
I'd more take it with my class.
Well, it's good to hear from you. There's a new person in the back who hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you so much. I don't know if the question has already been covered before, but do you intend to turn the ruins, you know, the Redwick Ruin, into a visitor center or building of some sort?
Well, we did discuss that a little bit, but just to summarize, it was the mission of the people who originally repurposed the island back in the 70s, when the Redwick Ruin was in hot weather shape where it is now, that it would be a visitor center for the whole 13 acre site. And that was, that was a long time ago. I think it is no secret that we think it would be a wonderful land for the island if that building were repurposed to a community use, and make the island a 12-month, make the parks a 12-monthly year destination. But everybody's a long way from that, and an awful lot of people would have to think it's a good idea before anything happens.
Did you see your turn again?
Yes. First of all, there is no such thing as the Redwick Ruin, it's the Smallpox Hospital. And I will correct every single person who says that, no matter who, what, where, when, and why. There's no building in any landmark designation report that says Redwick Ruin. Secondly, you haven't been at the park in April, when all the geese are going to be parenting. And you are going to have little goslings and mommies and daddies everywhere, from the end of Goldwater, down through, especially where your trailers are, you've been there. So you, and there is no Planned Parenthood for geese. So beware. And if you go near them, you'll be in deep, deep goose.
They've actually been there for three years.
Yeah, you've been there.
They've actually been there for 30 months, plus four months.
Right, yeah.
So you actually know the geese.
Anyhow, the third thing is, the other question is, Lighthouse Park was flooded during the hurricane. It is not open, which means our bicyclists and our people who love to cycle, I mean, you know, maybe this month the weather will get better, can't go very far. They can go as far as the front of Kohler Hospital or the back of Kohler Hospital, because the back of Kohler is all generators and stuff. The Lighthouse Park electrical's knocked out. And, I mean, what's going to happen if someone rides a bike down to the FDR? I don't think bike wheels are going to damage the granite. I mean, it's just like, I don't know, it's ridiculous. People love to bicycle on this island, and they're very considerate. I've never had problems with bicyclists on this island. And it would be really nice if the bicyclists could at least hit the point, north or south point of the island, because, you know, they have to lock up their bikes and go in and walk around the park. And we've had bicyclists, even when it was rutted and terrible down at South Point Park, at the South Point, people bicycled and loved it. And I mean, now you have to go down, lock up your bike, walk in the park, and a bicycle's not going to hurt anything. I mean, we're making this into a sacred, it's getting so sacred, you know, the Vatican City of Roosevelt Island.
One question, do they have bicycles biking on the sidewalk?
Yes. Well, they could go on the exterior, they would only be allowed on the perimeter.
Right. I'm just saying, because basically a sidewalk is basically 15 feet wide. If you have bicyclists on the sidewalk with pedestrians, that's not a good mix.
On the promenade.
The promenade, they all bike, all the side, the promenade, all of those. Some do the promenade, some do the, most do the promenade. And we haven't knocked anyone into the river yet.
Well, we're worried when we actually get filled up in the summertime, that we not really will have bicycles and.
Well, then I understand. But in, in this time of year, in April, May, when it's.
It's hard, though, to change rules like that and flip them, and to make it one way, and, you know, when it gets gradual, but yesterday we let.
Well, why don't you do it until the Lighthouse Park reopens?
Oh, again, though, and then poor disappointed people came, because they came with the.
Most of them are Roosevelt Islanders who bicycle.
Well, no, you know who they are, Brooklynites.
Listen, I've run the visitor center for five years. I can tell you, everyone who comes to this island, from Australians to Brazilians this year.
But isn't it fabulous, Brooklynites bike over, that we're getting.
People bike, a lot of people bike over, but those are mostly on weekends, not during the week.
Well, that's sort of our time.
I don't know, maybe you can allow bicyclists during the week. It's like some places allow strollers during the week, some museums, but not on weekends.
Couldn't you allow them to walk the bike on the?
Can you not be flexible, is the question.
Flexible.
Actually, flexibility here is the question, which you seem to not have.
I think with rules like that, it's very tricky, just if you allow it, then it just, you know, the next person, and then they want to, well, maybe I'll just get on my bike and I'll bike slowly. Again, I'm speaking coming from the garden world, where you do have all these restrictions in the High Line, where everyone was so disappointed, we didn't let folks skateboard or bike, and you just couldn't, because sometimes it would, you know, be completely clear, we'd be fine if a couple bicyclists would be up there, but in a moment's time, it could be crowded, and it's just very hard to have these changing rules. It's much easier to just enforce one rule. And again, you just hope the reasons for the restrictions make for the enjoyment of the park for the majority. And that's really the bicycling aspect. I think it's a safety issue, and, you know, as people are strolling down the promenade, to not be worried, you know, that there's a cyclist behind them.
We haven't lost anyone on our promenades yet in 35 years. I have not heard of anyone being knocked into, knocked into the river by someone bicycling on a street or a promenade. It's only 35 years.
We certainly have considered, right now, we're going to stick with the rule the way it is, and we're going into the heavy season, so for the reasons mentioned, probably won't change that rule right now.
And I would say that for the summer, we will actually have wonderful bike locking facilities right there at the entrance.
You're going to have bikes?
Bike racks, right there at the entrance.
That's my question. If you're not going to allow people to bring their bikes, you have to have someplace besides the fence.
Absolutely.
For people to lock their bikes.
You also have skate板, skate板, racks to be locked up too.
We, the only reason we don't have them yet is that winter came, and we can't pour concrete to make the foundations for them until it stays warm long enough to pour and set concrete. So we would have done this in month one, but we missed the.
How many bike racks are you actually planning to put in?
How many bikes?
How many, John?
We're putting, I said on both sides, I think it was like a set of 12 on each side of the Redwick Ruin.
The what?
Smallpox Hospital.
But I think if we need more, we would put some in the following week. That's a real, we definitely want it to be as bike-friendly as possible.
On your property or on RIAC's property?
We don't have any problem. In the park or not in the park?
That's right.
In the park or not in the park? Which side of the black fence?
It'll be on either side of the, on our side of the fence, I guess. But I'd like to clarify that it's not our side.
I understand, but this seems to be the invisible.
Is that your property?
We have no property. We own no property.
It's the park that they maintain.
This was, this was an agreement that we were developing, the park, as the design was there, that was developed in 1975, and we do not own any of the land that's there.
We are responsible for it.
Do you want to, can she have a.
Yes, it's your turn. It's your turn.
I have been talking to John about the Cherry Blossom Festival that's coming up. It's going to be our third annual Cherry Blossom Festival. And because of the hurricane, the place where we used to have the unbelievably wonderful Japanese orchestra of name I'm not very good at, we can't use that space, because the pier was damaged. I'd like to propose, if the weather is nice, that we, that we put them in that front part of your park, where there's, near where the stairs is, and then maybe could be on the top of there, and have the musicians play. I think that they would be absolutely thrilled, just as something for your first event in the park as part of, because we had already talked about doing a dedication with some of the cherry trees. I think that that might be a nice first step of bringing some world-class music into your park.
It sounds like a wonderful idea. We should talk about it.
Okay. I would love to have, like, work out all the details.
What's the date of?
It's April 13th, it's a Saturday.
Do you guys do it rain or shine?
We do do it rain or shine, so the outside would only be if it was beautiful weather. And we're talking to Kohler Hospital as far as, I'm sorry, Goldwater Hospital, if the weather's inclement of having them possibly use their auditorium. So we're looking at, but we were looking at an outside venue, and we really didn't have a good flat space that they could be viewed from, because the Cherry Blossom Festival is going to be that row cherry trees in front of Goldwater Hospital. So it would be on the way down to the entrance of the park. So if we could do the music, you know, on that platform, that would be absolutely spectacular.
Or you could do it on the bottom level, and use the stairs as a bleacher.
Well, I think that's, we could work out what, what would work best. I try to, yeah, because I try to work with them in terms of what culturally they think is the best way to be viewed.
Right, it sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd love that, I'd love that.
Is the music amplified?
We'd have to get it amplified and work all the details out. It would have to be amplified.
Well, we can discuss all those details. Well, I guess application for a program, because a person coming in with a loud radio is an imposition on everyone else.
Yeah, a booth box sitting on, that's what we're talking about.
And I, they would be so absolutely thrilled, because we took some of them down around the park, and they just thought it was spectacular. So at that time, I said, oh, I don't think that would ever be possible, so they would be so.
It's available for programming, we just have to work together on it.
Okay.
Okay, Britt.
I'm totally looking forward to music, any kind of concert events, whatsoever, that would go on in the park. I just wanted to, I'm going to bring my eyes on that subject. I have not been back to the park since the opening, and I walk around the island all the time. And as much as I respect that, I don't want to see needles in the grass or roti all over the place, it feels like a white couch with plastic on top of it. And the reason I didn't go back is because that's the feeling. It's like white furniture with plastic on it, where you can't really enjoy it. And I think that's what people are trying to get across to you, that you're not quite grasping, is that it's not welcoming. And the events, of course, would be great, because it will bring in people for events, but between the events, it feels very unwelcoming to the people who live here on the island between the events.
Well, this is Susie's job. Susie is responsible for visitor experience, and we need to train our staff. The staff that we hired when we had four days before we opened, they all came from the New York State Parks Department. They're very nice people, but they're not trained yet, really, to be the welcoming greeters that we absolutely want to have in our park. And that's a program Susie's working on with volunteers and then training the staff, is to make that, make your experience there warm and welcoming. You can't change the architecture. Now, that's the kind of monumental work that Khan did, but you should feel excited and happy and peaceful and inspired when you're there.
I don't think that the majority of the people feel like that, doing these.
Well, not the majority of the people in this room.
No.
Well, I think at the end of the day, you know, over as time unfolds, it will be, is this a park that people who live on the side run and enjoy, or is it a park for people who visit from other places?
One time.
Anyone who visits from another country, another city, is going to love that park, because for a moment, it is spectacularly beautiful. But basically, from our perspective, the parkland has been taken from us. And things that you could do in parkland, we're now not able to do. And it is one rule after another, and they don't make logical sense. And at the end of the day, I say to myself, would FDR like this park, this memorial? It is not a park, it is a memorial ordering on a church. And I don't think he would be happy with it. So is this a matter of, does this become something that this community can enjoy, or does it become an icon to an architect? And right now, it appears as an icon to an architect. And I don't think that FDR would be happy with that. I know, to be honest.
We certainly don't want you to feel that way, and as Sally just said, that's what I will, give us a chance, because we really haven't programmed, and we opened unexpectedly. We don't have, I have to tell you, the first two words of our training manual for our new rangers is be welcoming. And that's certainly what we want to convey, and that's the kind of experience we want to have, is obviously, it is a memorial, as you say, but I think there's a way to have a welcoming and warm experience at a memorial. And I think there's a way to have rules and restrictions that make you frustrating, but they allow for other things to happen that make a wonderful experience. For not just the international visitor, for the international visitor, for the person who comes, and we have folks who come every single day on the island. I, we want to increase that.
I do every single day.
So, well, that's what we strive to, you know, we're aiming for that. We don't want it to be an unwelcoming place for anyone. And I think if you give us some time, you know, get us our first season, I just love the idea that right now, we just have feedback with the community, and a wonderful event possibly arose from that. And this is what we need, and this is what we will do, and we just need a little time, so.
Fair enough.
So your turn again, Matt?
Okay. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I'm a performer. I performed all over this island, indoors and outdoors, and I can tell you from my experience, any music that you have will have to be amplified. It's just the nature of the ambient sound, it's got to be. Number one. Number two, 2001, the Trust for Public Land took over South Point Park, and I was part of the conceptual planning group that was convened right down below here, over a period of several months, to try to anticipate different options for the park. One of the things we considered was the Smallpox Hospital, and things that could be done for it, should the money for that ever be raised. There are architects' renderings at the Trust for Public Land. Andy Stone was the convener of those meetings, and I'm sure those, those plans still exist. They were excellent ideas to build something useful within the context of that stone structure outside, which is iconic after all. But they were good ideas, and they, they might still apply today.
That's a good piece of information. We've been more than happy to look at them. Again, we're not in control of this at all. We just hope that a group might come together that would share the interest in turning it into a public space. Maybe we, there's a little bit of urgency here. The thing is falling down. I mean, it's one thing to say it's a preserved ruin, it's a totally un-preserved ruin. And it's just falling down, so something needs to be done.
It looks like a mouthful of braces with all of that structural steel.
External fixation.
Yeah, so, so we really share, I think we share the objective. I hope that a group will come together that wants to work together and turn it into a really smashing community amenity that makes those parks, you know, totally usable year round.
We're, we're almost, well, we're past seven thirty, so I know you folks all just came from work. Could we wrap up, make sure we've got all the questions that need answering? We will certainly stay later if you want to, or else give out email addresses if you want to send further questions, but let's make sure we get everybody who has questions.
So let me ask you a question. I have lots of other questions, which I can talk to you about privately. But you're, you send out emails, I've been getting them, and they're very interesting. You send them out on holidays and, you know, with historical information about things that were going on with, you know, about Roosevelt at the time. I'm wondering if you also are sending out reminders about these kind of meetings on those, because I didn't see any. And I know people talked about, you know, there are other ways of posting. But, but you're using that as, as, as information. You might start using that as community information as well.
That's a great suggestion, yes.
And so when you do your posting, post, do you post your website? Or, you know, how to, how to get those announcements?
Good idea. We totally under marketed this evening, and we apologize for that.
Can I point out one more thing? Because I think that it, your project took so long to do, you know, to finally, to finally come to fruition. I mean, it was thirty years.
Forty years.
Forty, forty, thirty-nine, almost forty years. And you built out that land. So without you building out that land and actually creating the landfill that was the original park, you know, that we then took over and used as a park for a while, we wouldn't have had that land. So I kind of feel like we had, we were having, we gave a gift of time, you know, with, with borrowed land that was actually yours.
It was never ours.
Well, you created that land so that you could build this park on it.
And it was the wish of the city and the state, that the private sector do this in partnership with the city and the state. And I know you all know Bill Van den Hoorn, most of you, and he's the one who kept it alive and kept it going, and every decade tried to get it going. So it, it's a fulfillment of something that was supposed to happen. And as Susie said, our objective is to make it be something you're really proud of and that you love and enjoy. So we have a lot of work to do.
Did you have a question before we close? Wave Hill, I know of it. I don't think I've ever actually been there, I don't know. Is it in the middle of a community?
It is, it's in the middle of Riverdale, the malls. It's also in the middle of a number of mushivas and.
Are there other parks around in the, in the vicinity?
There's a few.
Public parks?
There's a few, not, not many, not, not many close to it. It really isn't hard for that, the residents.
Okay, the reason that I'm, I'm concurring a lot with Denise is that because we're an island, we don't have the ability always, with the kids especially, to go elsewhere. This is where they live, and this is where their parks are supposed to be. And we have gradually lost many of our parks. And the space that they have to play on and the space they have to run around in is limited. And now with.
Lighthouse.
Lighthouse, gone. That's one less, we get, that Lighthouse Park during the spring, summer, and fall is always filled on the weekends, packed with people, not from the island. Many of them are from off-island, from Queens. They're hugely packed. That will no longer be available. Our kids went out there to play. The only other space they have is Capobianco Park, which is across from Westview, Fireman's Field, which is across from South Town, near, near the tram. Is there another park?
Well, South Point.
South Point Park. That's not, it's not so much of a running around kind of park. They can, little kids can, but you can't play baseball there, you can't do sports there so easily. That is why, when we see this space that is so restricted for people who live in the community, I'm not talking about your once-in-one-time visitor from Germany and Holland and Asia and South Asia. Those people come once, they love it, and they leave, and they'll never be back. We live in the community that needs to be able to have a more open use of that space, whether it's a memorial, a mausoleum, or a park. And right now, it feels, I think, more appropriate word is, it's a mausoleum. Because we can't use it in a way that, that the community needs to have it. You have built the thing, it's there, we can't undo that. We tried to talk about it before it was built to try to get you to understand this. We have a community with lots of children, different ages, but a lot of very young kids. They need to have more than two parks to go to, which are very, very, very well-used. Oh, there's the softball park at Octagon. There's a softball park there.
Pony field.
But, yeah, the pony field. But this community needs to have more of that space available to it in the way that it needs to use it, not as a softball field, not as for soccer, but as a place for people to sit and, and have a picnic neatly. And if you have to have your groundspeople come around and remind people to throw shit out, fine.
I think I go back to the argument.
But we need to be able to have that space.
I totally understand that. I'm, I'm the mother of an eight-year-old, and she virtually grew up in Wave Hill, on the Wave Hill Garden and property. And I think, again, if you go back to what I was saying.
But you're not an enclosed community there.
But I think if you guys just give us a chance and see the way we're going to utilize the lawn, see the way we're going to program it, you may be pleasantly surprised even though there are restrictions. There's a wonderful, nobody's saying you can't run barefoot across our lawn, nobody's saying you can't enjoy the lawn, just because.
We can't sit and have a picnic.
Nobody says you can't fly a kite, that's news to me.
You can't sit and have a picnic in a responsible way.
The, the picnic thing is one thing, and I would love for us to have further discussions about that, that maybe there's times when we do allow picnicking, there's special events for the residents, things like that. But I think in general, having this open, beautiful, pristine lawn that can be used for many, many enjoyable activities by tiny people, by teenagers, I think there's an opportunity there. And if you guys would give us a chance, see it for the season, I think you'll see that this is what we're aiming for as well.
We don't have any choice but to give you a chance. You're there.
True, but we.
We've tried to talk about making changes that we would have liked to have seen that would have accommodated the memorial, but would have also accommodated the community, and we were completely locked out of that discussion.
But I think family, family art projects take place, you know, on the lawn. There's one, there's a wealth of programming we can do that would welcome everyone, many ages.
Concerts, little quartets, trios.
Yeah, concerts out there would be great, all of those things.
You know what, we should wrap up. We're, we're here, we're happy to stay later, some of you have been here a long time, so.
Yeah, I guess we'll make sure.
Yes, Britt.
A lot of the families here, you have to keep in mind, it's an island, and you have to pay to go off of it. And so a lot of the moms with several kids, they, they're here, and they don't really have the option so much of going somewhere else. And that's the problem, you take that space away, it means a subway or a tram with your kids. And so that's not an option.
Well, hopefully, we're going to be offering them things that they can come in free of charge, you know, participate in, that will be.
Well, you're not here because they feel that they've been robbed.
Oh, I know, I totally understand that. You know, I wasn't here, but yeah, I think we're hearing that loud and clear. And, but we're just saying, we want to offer you something, you know.
To ameliorate that.
Yeah.
Can you just provide the, the legal agreement that gives you the right to make these rules and regulations?
Sure, would you like, we have a finished signed cooperative agreement, but it's the agreement that we have with state parks.
And what role does Riak have in that, though? Can you explain that?
Riak didn't want to have anything to do with it, if you remember, then you weren't there then.
No, I was, believe me, I was there. But Riak has never given up any right to say what type of use can go on in the park. So that's why I'm confused. I don't know where you, where that assumption comes from.
Maybe we could talk about that, we could get to the, the basis for the agreement.
I, I would appreciate that, please.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for coming.